I'm gonna call us to order a Heinsberg School Board at 7:10 on November 15th. Good evening, welcome everybody. Adjustments to the agenda, I have one. In light of what just happened at the CSSU meeting, we're gonna change 7.1 from accept independent audit to appoint audit committee member.
I'll text so you see.
Well, yeah, we'll get there.
I'll text.
Oh, okay, thank you. Anything else? All right. Audience communication, we have no one other than our presenters, so we'll move on to our presenters. 4.1, grade 7, 8 presentation.
So this evening, we have some of our 7, 8 teachers that are here to present a little bit about our, what we're doing around standard-based learning at Heinsberg. So we're gonna start with the 7, 8 grade tonight. So, just to let the board know, you'll see in front of you, I handed out, there's the vocabulary list that you had mentioned at the last board, so we have some of those. And also I brought back this slide, just to kind of put you into frame of reference of where we left off when Monica and I did a presentation. You know, how do these elements work together around standard-based learning? And we had, and this is the work plan, these are the four boxes of that work plan that we had presented to you the last time. So the 7, 8 is going to be talking to you a little bit about what does that look like in their instruction and with their students when they're using learning targets and designing their instruction and using those scales with their students? What does that look like? And then using student information and evidence to support those targets and support the differentiating of instruction in their classroom. So tonight we have Jen Bradford, and we have Maria Sire, and we have Barb Spalding here. And they're gonna, they have a, put together a really nice presentation for you tonight. So I want you guys to go ahead, you can start, and I can do the slides if you'd like.
Sure.
Oh, I have to start?
Yes.
So, we just did want to introduce that we represent a group of six. So this year we have four classroom teachers, one for language arts, social science, science and math, and then we have two special educators that co-teach in their classes. And currently we're running at 107 kids in our program, which is quite large. So, and we totally didn't rehearse this very well, so please excuse us.
We're busy teaching the children.
Two hundred and seventy children. So, you know, our process, similar to that other slide, just, this is more of a list format of it, that we identify a standard and its parent standard, we create targets and scales, and then we look at learning opportunities and assess learning. And for our crew, which is an experienced crew of teachers, it's a lot of taking things that we've done, putting them up towards standards, seeing if we still value it, what do we really want to get out of different assignments, and then creating work around that. It's not, we're not starting from scratch, but we're definitely taking all the ingredients and creating a new, new process. Sorry. So, one of the things that we really wanted to highlight is that when we talk about creating scales and standards that one size doesn't fit all, it can look a lot of different ways. And our presentation is in a bunch of examples that show the diversity that you can get within PBL. And one is that the work can sometimes be linear. So when we look at a standard and we talk about proficiency, it may look like something kids do all year long, and we talk about like increasing reading fluency. We're looking for a certain number of words per minute in September, which is different than December, which is different than January. But sometimes it's more contextual. So, a standard like writing a claim could happen in everyone's classroom. So, currently, in my class, social science, we're writing claims. In science next door, they're writing claims. So they're getting different content, different instruction, just with a little how different teachers teach things differently, but working towards that same standard. And that one task or lesson can cover multiple standards. So you start to see, here's an essay, but here's four different targets that are being addressed in one particular task.
So here's some of the 7th grade, this is the unit, one of the targets and scales from the unit we're currently working on with the 7th grade. And the top level is the regular level target, and the bottom one is a modified target. So some kids who are not as, what's the word for it?
Proficient.
Proficient, or don't have as much readiness for the content, are working with a scale that's just shifted back one step. What do they call it, backing out?
Mm-hmm.
Something like that.
Okay.
And with the idea that where most kids, we're looking for them to model addition and subtraction of rational numbers, meaning positive and negative numbers, that's the 3. For the other ones, they are looking at, wait a minute, it's the same thing.
No, this is.
Oh, using integer or integer tiles. And they don't have to do the rewriting into addition. And so that's a separate level. What happens with this target is it gets assessed, like, I mean, the way I'm doing it now is every week, every Friday, we have some kind of a formative assessment where we see where they are with the targets we're currently doing. And that way then, next week, we look at how do we do things differently? Or how do we take the kids who are at 2s and move them to 3s? And how do we take the kids who are already at a 3 and try to move them to the 4? So a lot of times, classes are all together, and then some days we're split based on what kids need.
For me, the nice thing as a special educator in that math classroom is that having, having these targets to modify into this set of targets makes really clear for me how we can differentiate in a way that allows everybody meaningful access to the unit that we're doing in math. It's not like, boy, you're just not ready for it, so you're not doing it. But, you know, this 4, you know, is closely related to that 3. And this 3 is closely related to that 2. It's just one step off. And ironically, I feel like kids are making more progress towards meeting the overall standards by backing up a little bit to begin. But it's just made my work very clear as the special educator.
So, when you are working on say this unit, a particular unit, how do you make those assessments on a day-to-day basis? Is it, I mean, do they get frequent quizzes? Or is it through your observation of the work that they're doing through look at walking around the room? I mean, what is, what is the judgment that you exercise to say a student is in one of those boxes versus a different box?
You mean, the modified program versus the regular or the?
Yeah, either or both.
I think that evidence.
The evidence, I mean, right now, we're pretty much doing a formative assessment every single Friday, because that consistency works well for kids, that they just kind of know it and expect it, and it's not too intense, because it's only a formative, and we just see where they are.
What do those look like? What do the formatives look like?
We've got, do we have pictures of those coming?
Yeah.
We have pictures of those coming in another slide in a little bit. And then there's also, some of it is what you see kids struggling with comes, obviously, sometimes we'll be like, okay, I want to see where they are with this. We did a little checkup today, just to see where they were with something. That wasn't even a formative, it doesn't even go into jump rope. It was just, I needed to, we needed to figure out where the class was on something really from last year more than this year, so.
And I can speak as a outside person coming in and just, you know, hanging out in classrooms is, is the way that the classrooms look, especially in math, now, as opposed to 10 years ago, there's a little bit of instruction. And then Jen and Maria are working with small groups of kids as the kids have conversations. So that, like, that alone is the formative assessment. Hearing where the kids are, listening to them, be able to talk about the math, talk about their learning. And then, these two can look at each other and be like, oh, wait, like, we're not there, let's go back, let's give another five minutes of instruction, do that, boom, and now the kids are back. So it's, there's, there's the bigger formative pieces every Friday, it sounds like, but that constant.
That's the more formal.
The constant minute to minute is incredible.
And I'd like to add on there is, when I've sat in the math classes with Maria and Jen, students are up at the board really talking about it, and the talk is really valuable information to the teacher and to the students in the room. They're having to prove why, how they came up with that answer, or, and also explain their thinking, and really provide that evidence of how did they get that answer? Or where did they, their thinking track? And that's ongoing in that whole classroom environment, which is also informing the teachers and anybody else, and the students in the classroom, to, to listen to each other and to ask questions and to prove your thinking to each other.
One of the things I really like about this is that because the assessments aren't sort of the end of everything, that when the kids get them back, it's not, oh, this is over and done with, you know, I got a lousy grade, or, oh, great, I did fine. It becomes a piece of the next learning. Sometimes we'll take questions right off the test, that, or the checkup, trying to get, change that language, and look over them again as a class. Or have a group rework some of the problems that people as a group struggled with. So it's, it's not just an assessment, it's also another learning opportunity.
Are there instances, we're about to ask, and what happens if there are instances of a kid who, student who takes a formative assessment, has all the bases covered, then what?
And that's where we do a lot of regrouping. Where we look and we say, okay, these kids are at a 1, these are at a 2, these are at a 3. So tomorrow, what we're doing in class is these kids are doing this, these kids are doing this, and these kids are doing that. To try to move everybody up from where they are. And sometimes it gets a little nutty, because you have multiple groups going and the, you know, and we're trying to check in with every single group.
How many different cohorts would you say we have currently now in 7th grade math?
By cohorts, what do you mean? Like, different levels?
Different groupings within the group?
It depends on the target.
And the day.
And the day.
And the day. Like, there's a target we did very little with, that most of the class was at 3s with, and I was kind of surprised, because we don't know that much. But they really have that, and then there's another target, it's not this one, it's a different one, where I'm like, okay, we're not getting very far on that. And I'm thinking, how do I need to change my instruction to move those kids forward? Because right now, a lot of them aren't moving. And then what am I gonna do with the couple of kids who are, do have it?
I think typically it's.
On average, how many cohorts do you have going at a time?
Typically, 2 to 3.
Is it 1, is it 2?
I think typically 2 to 3, and I think our record is 5 things happening at once.
Yeah, that was.
Thank you.
Busy.
And again, the paradigm shift is that we've always asked kids to adapt to the way that lessons were instructed. And now we're adapting the way that we instruct based on the kids.
Sure.
I mean, it's just.
I understand that's a goal, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty cool to watch.
And if I can just say that there's a real emphasis for the kids, because they're learning a new way of thinking about this too, on, on their growth over time. So each kid has a copy of the learning targets, and we'll hand back the assessments. And the first thing that happens is, okay, it's checkup A, and you write it A, okay, I got a, I got a 1 for checkup A on this one. And then, we take checkup B, and we come back to the scale. Okay, now, B is over here, and so you can really see that progression and movement over time. Or you can see that if I was getting 2s and 3s, A, B, and then suddenly C was over here, we can see that something happened with C. It's not like C suddenly wipes out all those, the progress that was made and the growth that was made earlier. So it just allows for more perspective and growth over time for the kids. It's not like, oh, I failed the test, I'm done now.
And the expectation isn't always that they're at a 3 when we give the checkup. Sometimes the expectation is that the most I'm gonna see is 2, because that's where we are. I think that's what's hardest for the kids, actually, is that, that shift that this is only a checkup, and it's okay that I got a 2, because that's about where I'm expecting them to be at this point.
And I've always, just on a side note, you see the, the unit name accentuate the negative? I always enjoyed that.
I didn't name it, I didn't.
No, it's.
It's CMP.
Okay, sorry. Okay. This is an 8th grade math target that we really just started with, where there, this is one of my favorite, actually, because it's so real world, because in the real world, all the time, you're looking for relationships between variables, and where they make scatter plots and look for relationships. What's interesting is here's where we overlap the algebra in 8th grade. So if you are a kid, to meet 8th grade, you need to be here. If you're wanting to get Algebra 1 credit, you need to be here. This is exceeding the standard for Algebra 1, which is essentially the 9th grade math. So they become embedded together, like that. And there are some standards that are just 8th grade, and some standards that are just algebra, but many of them are like that, where you can just say, to be Algebra 1, you just gotta be one more step over.
So there's an example where you could see where we might legitimately end up with five different things happening within the classroom at any given time, based on where kids are performing.
This is where a class size comes into.
Sure.
And it's just, this is just a collection of classwork assignments, a formative checkup, a warm-up, another formative checkup, and a summative. But they, they all have the core math idea, they all have the target written on them clearly. Most of them contain the scale, even though a warm-up from the morning contains the scale. So the kids are focusing on like, okay, here is where we are trying to get today in this work. I think gone are the days of, what are we doing in math today? And we're doing math. Right? Like, I think there's much more specificity around what's happening.
I'm not sure if that point was hammered home. That, that warm-up on October 13th, it has the scale right on the top. So students always know how their learning is connected with the scale, and that's one thing, I, I'm just so impressed with, when, when I see that on a, on a piece of paper, because to make learning relevant and real for the kids, it's just, okay, that's what I'm going after. It's pretty awesome.
And they're really starting to use it. Like, initially, they didn't really pay much attention to it, but as the years go on, they're starting to actually read it. Not everybody yet, but a lot of them.
So, the Science and Engineering Program, so Steph Conowitz put this together. So she's identified here the standard that's being addressed from the, and there's too many anachronisms.
NGSS.
NGSS. But they've been doing a lot about gravity, so you can go ahead and. And so again, we have another learning target, and, and like all good learning targets, they're written in that positive nature of I can, so this is what I can do. So at a beginning level, and we look at it that you can, you can understand gravity, you can make connections, but you're doing it at this level. Here's, and then you're moving up, up the scale. And that's a switch too, from, we talk about like, what's the difference between a scale and a rubric? A rubric often was written with, not necessarily negative language, but it might say, you know, lax connection with model. Where here, it might say, has limited connection with model. So it's, it's trying to show what that, what can be done, or what is being demonstrated within a target.
And one of the things I know, I was in Stephanie's class when she's starting to do this, so it's through the gravity is the content. And, and in this learning target in scale, she's really emphasizing on how do you, a fair investigation, and what are variables, and having those discussions eliminate, you know, how do you limit how many variables you have, and really asking students those questions, and really having them to think about what it is that they're doing around those gravity investigations that help them to really say, where am I, and is my test a fair test, and how do I continue my thinking and apply it?
Just a quick question. Do you have a process where you take the interpretation from your students to adjust your scales? Does that make sense? So like, if they are having a hard time understanding the description or what's being noted in the scale, do you have a process where you're taking that feedback and going rewriting your scales?
Yes. I mean, I even rewrite them based on what, what's happening in class, and whether I think maybe that piece of it was maybe a little bit too hard, and really is more of a level 2.
Or just the language that you use.
Or change the language, yeah.
And then, a lot of times, even when you're teaching your, you know, and you're having students using their learning targets and scales, that vocabulary is also part of your lesson. So that becomes part of what, you know, you're, you've done a lot of work around what is a variable, and we've talked about those. And so they have a clearer picture of, when I say, I'd like you to create a fair test that has, you know, a limit to the number of variables. They know what that language is, and they're starting to use that in their explanations and in their talk in their, in their classroom, and in their writing in science. So those, those are types, those types of things. Just like in math, when Maria had different content and different language in there, that's also being taught to students.
And I think too, that like, you know, as we go through this process, so, within the 6 in our group, we have, they were just, we were talking about this, others, like, there's 3 of, there are 2 of us that have, have used some targets and scales with students and have test wrote them, and have made those adjustments. And then, we've got 2 others, or 4 others that, they're new to this, and so they're in that process of building. So, when you look at them, some are more refined than others at this point.
And I ask that, because I understand that that takes time. And, you know, common meeting time, sometimes, and process time for interpretation.
And sometimes you have to try it with the kids to go, wait, I got it.
Yeah.
Like, this is where, let's step back and do that. And that's a nice part of PBL too, because it's, there's definitely a stronger sense within students that we're all in this together. Like, we're all learning this, we're all working for it, this is what this really means.
Yeah, thank you.
Get the next slide.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask it at some point. You know I got one.
Yes, I do.
I'm sorry.
No, I think he's gonna wait.
I'll wait.
Okay. And so, curriculum assessment, again, so this, this idea of, what was that? So then they did static electricity, they did magnetism, and this was like crazy loud, there were balloons popping next door all, for like, 2 weeks. My hair was like this, you know, Steph would come in and goes, I have to know if this does static, and she'd rub things on my head to try to make static electricity. Lots of instruction and feedback, talking about how you can use scales, so giving kids feedback on scales, so, you know, this is a group that is at this level, this is a group at this level, supporting each other. And then, they did a summative assessment where they're writing their own test questions using those variables as part of it. They videotaped them, they conducted their, part of the way they saw if their questions were truly testable, they had to try to test them. It's a very real-life, you know, consequence of, did I come up with a question that could be tested in a fair way? Did I run into problems with it, which is very different than just writing it down on a piece of paper and saying, I think this is right.
And I remember when she was videoing, it helps her to actually see what they wrote about, and what she actually sees in the video, does it match? That they didn't actually change and go, well, yeah, I was supposed to put more in there, and I didn't, but actually, the video was saying a whole different thing. So it was that idea that students and Steph could actually look at student work to see how much they were meeting that target or moving towards that. So it was a, it was a neat way to do that, and to give kids direct feedback.
Is it time? You gonna ask that or?
Sure, I'll ask it. So, by middle school, kids have figured out what counts and what doesn't count? So the summative, if I'm correct, is the summative the, the final?
Yes.
Test upon which a grade is based? Do you have problems with people not taking the formative stuff seriously?
No.
Because, because a quote-unquote doesn't count?
They take it too seriously. Yeah. I know, early on in this process, that was a question I asked over and over and over again, and really was like, I don't believe it. Yeah, I don't, I don't believe any of this is true. I think, I mean, there's always gonna be a group of kids that want to do well, and they're gonna do well, if it's formative, summative. And there's gonna be a group of kids, you gotta convince that they should try harder. I don't think it changes anything between these 2. I think what this does, it gives a lot of kids hope. So there's a lot of kids that don't necessarily see that they're really good at school, this is something they can grab onto, because they can see more progress in, in themselves, and they, they're willing to try more. But there's just, you know, kids do formatives, they, and they put a lot of effort into formatives. Sometimes we have to say like, okay, this was one point, like, great, I know you want to redo it, but we're having another one next week, you know, kind of thing. They're incredibly motivated.
Barb was lucky enough to be part of a smaller cohort, and I was, I was chuckling when you asked the question, because she was, Jeff, they're not gonna care. They're not gonna care. Like, if we don't make them do it, like, they're not gonna, and, and so she's done a complete 3s, I mean, it's, and it's, and it's something that we've, we heard from CBU, because we came up to CBU 3 or 4 years ago, and, and all those same questions we have. And, and the teachers were like, no, they're, they're gonna do it because you're giving them hope. And, and so it's, it's been a fun process, because we still, as people are learning, they still have questions around this, as they're, because everybody's at a different stage of life.
I think for some kids, it takes the pressure, there's some kids who, when it's an assessment, kind of go to pieces because of the stress, and I think it takes the stress off that, so that those kids can be more comfortable with an assessment then.
I gotta speak from what I hear at home. And I have 1 child, you know my kids. One of them, this isn't an issue, the other one I hear oftentimes, what is, Dad, it was just the formative. It was just the formative. I got it covered. You know, the summative, I'm gonna knock it out of the park, you know? So I just gotta say, that's, I'm not saying she's not trying, but I, I think she does have this feeling that I can coast along a little bit. I'm just, that's just what I hear.
That's not what she's showing at school?
Well, good.
Maybe saying that to her, that's not what I'm saying.
She skipped rec time today.
She's gonna work on something.
Yeah.
She's been doubted.
Hypothetically, she raised.
We don't talk about people.
We don't talk about students, we talk about hypothetically.
Hypothetically, that student may have stayed in for reasons.
I think one of the things that it, for students, is it's, it, the learning or, or where they're headed, the journey that they're headed, becomes visible. Instead of this thing wondering where it is that the teacher's going with this, instead now, it's all out there. They can see where they're going, they can see where the outcome or where the expectation is. And, so it's, everybody's learning from each other, and, you know, what the teachers are expecting, it's there, it's right there in front of you. And then how we get there will be different based on how you respond either to formative or classwork or the summative. For a lot of students, that makes a lot of sense, to be able to know where, making it much more visible.
You gotta go back.
Oh, we never talked about that.
Yeah, you guys are done.
Are you guys, I'm, sorry. There you go. There you go. So, Stephen Heenan, Erin Dolan, the special educator who co-teaches with him, couldn't be here tonight, but this is an example of some of the work they're doing in, in their classroom around reading journals, which is an independent bi-weekly assignment. And here's an example of, I mean, they have it listed as a scoring scale. I mean, this is more of a rubric to assess an assignment that they're doing. So it just highlights the different places that we're in, in terms of this journey, and the different ways that we're using it and playing with it. But they have this assignment where they have a list of prompts, and they choose the one that makes the most sense for their independent reading. And this is what they use to score it.
And their learning targets at the top. So they're, I can comprehend complex literacy and informative texts independently and proficiently. So, they have their learning target, they're still in that stage of trying to develop what that scale's gonna look like. So, until they get to that point, this is how they're using this piece to help to communicate to the student what they're doing.
And on the next slide.
And the difference was the arrow? I don't know if you noticed the arrow on the top of the scales of the other ones? To show visually that it's just a progression, where here it's more defined.
They made a note of, of some of the accommodations and universal tools for all students that, that help to promote independence as, as each child works towards meeting the standard in language arts. So they use Read and Write for Google Chrome, which allows for text to speech, and dual-color highlighting, and other speech to text options. And also the use of Book Share, where the text is accompanied by audio, which is supporting a number of kids at this point in reading the novel The Outsiders. But, there's sometimes that, like, does it make more sense to modify the learning standard and the learning target that we're aiming for? Or does it make sense to keep it the same, but provide more accommodations and supports, and maybe expect a little less independence? Or a little, sorry, a little more, a little less independence? And, and so, one of those 2, more or less.
But I think, can I?
Yeah, get me out of this one.
Can I help you? So, you know, if, this is what's nice about standard-based readers, you know, work, is that if your, if your target is about reading comprehension, then you, you're probably gonna need to pick a different book, the one's more of appropriate reading level. If your target is about interpreting that and, you know, identifying the role of the protagonist and antagonist, then you can use combinations like this to help kids access the material, but they still need to make that processing of this is a classic protagonist or antagonist. And that's one of the nice things about standard-based learning, is you can kind of pull apart, you know, I always think of my teachers growing up, who said I wasn't a good writer? Because I can't spell, to save my life, and I'm sure that will show up in a slide here. Although I proofread it, it will show up. But if you, you know, for a lot of teachers, they couldn't, they couldn't pull out content versus the visual spelling, what it looked like. And, should those be 2 different things? You know, can you, can you give information without, with spelling errors, you know? And so this allows you to like, look at what, what do I? And so this allows you to like, look at, what, what do I need to work on? What do I have solid?
And these accommodations match what, not that it's all about the S-Back, but the S-Back also provides similar accommodations.
And I, you know, I just want, you know, this showed an example in the slide before of, as Monica and I talked about, we have staff at different stages of learning how to write targets and developing scales and looking at summative and formative assessments. Just like we have in our classrooms and students, we also have staff that are at different stages. And as Monica and I were saying, as we, on, you know, kinda rolling out this work plan, we keep differentiating those groups and supporting teachers around this work. So.
So this is some finished work from the language arts classes. They had a target around visualizing the scene and recreating the scene from the novel, any scene from the novel Outsiders.
So, social science, so what I wanted to show here is that we have a standard. Social science is, we're kind of a weird discipline in terms of where we stand in terms of having a national leadership around standards. Some of our standards are actually not even reading standards. So this is one that's from common core. But, you know, distinguishing fact, opinion, and reasoned judgment. So this is one you can do two different tar, you can probably do a lot of targets, but, so here's one where you act as a reader, identifying that in content that you, you have. Or you can do it as an author, using the fact, opinion, or reasoned judgment to make a point. And then this is kind of a benchmark, this is one of my favorite, when the kids like it. So it's kinda, we talk about why people smell better than reindeer. And we, we get at the idea of evidence and analysis, and how to do that. Also gets that sources and all of that. So we use a lot of visuals and why, you would be amazed how much research on reindeer there are. I'm telling you, do a little research, there's a lot of government money involved in this, it's crazy. I did it as a joke and I was shocked when I found out. And then this other idea with a, a single task can have multiple targets. So this is something that we are doing right now. They're creating a map, and they're identifying the map, places that they're, they feel aspirational about that they would like to go visit. And so what, there's one target around creating a map, so using visual, creating a visual graphics design to present information. And then there's a visual that goes with it, or, sorry, a target that is about writing a claim. Can you make a statement and then give evidence why that would be good? And then this is tied into our, dare I say it, our PLP work.
Personalized learning.
Plan. So we're kinda, you know, with this activity, kinda, kinda killing two birds with one stone, because we're, you know, we're looking at that, that visual component. And then also where, you know, can you identify some places in the US and give evidence why? And be aspirational about that, so then we can start building kind of our work plan around personalized learning plans.
And that's a good example of really having students hone their work. So you have a disengaged learner who doesn't wanna do it. And now all of a sudden, it's a choice. It's like, where do you wanna go? And now all of a sudden, he becomes engaged in the work, because it's, he's not being told. And so, so many of these students that don't like to be told what to do, now they have choice.
And this is some pictures of students working in science and social science class.
And that's us.
That's us.
Who's who?
I'm the Martian. That's as far as we go.
Any other questions?
So I just wanna follow up on the question of a student engagement. So from your perspective, just, you know, anecdotally, are you seeing a different level of student engagement compared to prior years? You know, you're both highly experienced, all of you are highly experienced educators. Are you seeing something different in the classroom that you haven't seen before?
I've had such a huge shift from last year having a class of fourteen to fifteen kids to now having a class of twenty-seven to twenty-nine kids.
Yes.
And I'm not, and I think, I don't know if I can separate those two variables. This is not like a controlled experiment to bring back the science stuff. I'm also a science certified, but I don't know if I can separate that out.
I would say, I think, especially when you get to midterm, I would say that there's more engagement. Because under the old model, and I was guilty of this as much as anyone, you would say, "We're gonna do five of these assignments, and if you get an A on one, and you write like the ninety-five on the board, and you get a B on one, you put an eighty-five on the board." But you don't do two, and you put zero and zero, and then, you know, you, you do the math. And, and there were kids that at the midterm or kinda at the end, would say, "Well, it doesn't matter. I can't statistically get up, so, you know, if, I'm in trouble whether I bring home a C or an N, it doesn't matter." And I, I think that's completely gone. Also, that idea of, if I just, you know, hope the school go away, it will go away. That sense of, no, we're still doing this. You know, it's like, the topic's gonna change, but we're still gonna work on claim writing. We're still gonna work on, you know, creating visuals and all that. I think there's more, more to grab into for kids. So I, I would argue that there is more engagement. You know, there's still gonna be kids that struggle, you know, struggle with that. And I do, I know, we're gonna beat this drum, but Steph would really want us to beat it too. Then our numbers are, are really high, and we look at, I feel like CDU freshman corps is our closest, you know, cohort in terms of staff. And they have eighty-five kids split with five teachers who take, you know, so they take that number divided by five, and we're one hundred and six by four. And we are, just even physical space, you talk about, is there enough room to move around and spread out? That's a challenge for us.
I'm gonna jump in again. Because I should never answer quickly, because I'm a muller. I think the difference is, when it comes around to assessments, that they're not the end. And kids then take them, and I see a lot of kids no longer, "That's the end, oh, it's over and done with, that's the motivator now." Because they're like, "Wait a minute, we're, I'm only at a two, I wanna be at a three, what do I need to do?" And I think that's the motivational difference that I see, and I do see kids with that.
So it's more gaining mentality since getting to the next level.
Yeah, and they can see their progress. So even if they don't make it to the three, they can see that, "Well, I started at a one and now I'm at a two, so I did get something," you know? I think there's more of a feeling of success from that than there is if you just don't pass, kinda thing.
And that's the growth mindset.
Yep.
If you've heard the term.
Is, is that, to me, that almost is a result of what I'm hearing is a change in the system. Because that is a new dynamic to me, that you, that, that the students nowadays get a chance to continue working on something. Because I would venture to guess that when all of us went to school, when you finished the unit, you got the B, you moved on, that was it. You know, you had your chance at that, now we're moving on to something else. Too bad.
Well, and also too, when you don't decide your paid skills, then you got that sense of, well, there are, you know, like, but that writing example, like, if either I'm a good writer or I'm a bad writer, but, you know, if the score says C, I'm gonna say I'm a bad writer, but it doesn't look at, you know, that, these are the different parts. And I think for kids to, you know, for some of the kids that don't feel successful, when you can sit there and go, "But you can do this, 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 and this." It's just these two things that we need to work on. It's much, it's much easier than saying, "I gotta get better at math," because that's a huge task.
That's unachievable.
Right.
You know, how, how do I approach that?
Right.
Now you're, now you're giving them something to bite off of. Saying, "I can, I can approach that."
So in the most recent summative that we just did on Friday, I had a student who was struggling, and I said, "Look for a target you feel more comfortable with and start there." And so he flipped and he was like, "Oh yeah, I know how to do this target." And then he was off and going. I think it just makes it.
Accessible.
Yeah.
Thank you. That was great.
Thank you.
Very informative.
Yeah, it's very helpful to have the, break it down, examples.
You know, I, I just keep thinking about, this is like the fifth time I've had one of these presentations, which is great, and I learn something new every time. Someone else in my household hasn't heard these presentations this many times, and still lots of scratching your head and questions, and, "How's this work? And what's it all about?" And just, just food for thought for all you folks, because I get it, not, I'm, I'm in both feet a hundred percent, you know? But I just think there's still a lot of questions from parents.
PBL number two coming
Well, good.
to a theater near you.
Just, just food for thought.
Two or three-minute videos.
No, well, we had PBL information at number one last year, and there's number two already scheduled.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in, for having us. Run between the raindrops. I can hear it.
But yes, we were looking at the, I'd like to do another forum. And actually, I've got some thoughts about it, a little bit about a video clip and having some students talk about this shift.
Yeah, short, when people deal with two or three minutes, you know, show me what it is and...
And I, and just, and we, I kinda got that idea, I think Shelburne was doing something.
Shelburne Middle School worked with some of the district coaches, and the coaches just went in and gathered their voices. And it's so authentic, when it's the kids talking about PBL and what it means to them, and as a learner, what hope that has brought them. And so we've decided with our coaches, when they're in HCS, to really capture and share. Because you're right, that outreach that Val was talking about, get the information into our community.
Right.
And I think what it does, you know, boards being policy and budget, I think what it does is it helps us with our discussions with the community about how schools are changing and so forth, and the needs, and the continuous growth of faculty. It's not like people come out of a box and they're done.
You saw it tonight, I mean, there's a few of them that have been doing this for a couple of years, so they're comfort level, they're already revising their targets, they're trying to figure out how to better use them. And we have others that are just stepping on, and, because it's their first year of really trying this out. And so they've got parts of it there, and they're still working on the other parts, so. And that's where having these coaches in our school has been great, and having, we're unique in the fact that we've had Monica there half-time. So I feel like we've been able to do more than maybe some of the other schools because of just having that person in the building half-time, where teachers can say, "Hey, Monica, I'm trying to create this learning target, I need some help." So that's been very, very beneficial for them.
I'd also add, RPD work is guided by those same scales. So when you're asking about motivation, I know where I'm at. I also know what I need to start working on in order to move on that continuum. So I, I think it's very telling for me, like, my, my goals are explicit.
Yes.
They're defined by the scale.
And, and as far as like professional development, you mean like your plan for the year? Your individual plan for the year?
So all PBL is established on scales. And so we rated ourselves at the beginning of the year, and we went through different workshops with our coaches. And each time, we start, we take a little self-reflection and see how we've grown. So we have scales in our goal, you know, in a year or longer, is to continue to make all educators proficient in the use of PBL.
All right. That was good, that was a good.
That's good. Every time I see it, it's good.
And I particularly liked the continuum that we've had this year, you know, of seeing how this works for the teachers and then tying it into how it's conveyed to the students. Five-point-O, reports to the board. Five-point-one, principals' report.
Go ahead.
Can I try it?
Oh! This is, this is, no, this is what's in the packet.
Oh, yeah. I'll take this opportunity to say that I really appreciate it, Jen, and I know Susan has too. And, and she, the reason why I think it's appropriate for her to do this is because she's really the one that put it together. So it's, it's nice.
It's an extra hand, and you have to pay her any extra, right?
Like, how do we, how do we get more of this?
Baker, there's some things you can think and some things you can say.
She knows the spirit, I say that, and come on.
I'm learning all the aspects of our school, and I'm loving every minute of it, and what a school it is, really. So thank you for giving me the opportunity, opportunity to be part of this. The captures in the principal report really talk about the celebrations from kindergarten through eighth grade, just to highlight, you know, that fall season, different classes were capturing what was happening in their community. We had kindergartners who visited a pumpkin farm, we had a funnel-ween celebration for K through two. Second graders planted their tulips to be happily surprised in the spring, when they actually will come up in our shared garden space. Always exciting to see kids out there playing in the dirt. It, it's highlighted here for third grade, but a mock election was run at our building. So K through two got to vote on the town dog tag shape. And it was a highlight, I can't remember what won, a star?
The star did.
So we give that information back to the town, and hopefully we'll see that star on our dogs next spring. That's cool. Mock election also happened dabbling in our politics, enough said. Fourth grade, we culminated our geology unit by visiting the Echo Leahy Center. One of our board members was also a chaperone, and just lots of hands-on fun. You know, we're talking whole language learning, hands-on experiences. It was just a great, great unit for students. Fifth grade are, once again, celebrating that penguin plunge we like to give back to our community, and Paul Lasher is heading that up.
Yeah, board members are encouraged to...
There's some pretty disappointing sixth graders.
About what?
That they are missing out on that opportunity.
Oh, no, they're not.
Oh, they can do it.
Oh, yeah. No, they're, they're happily invited, it's any, any child in the school.
That, that needs to be made clear, because there is a cohort of sixth, sixth-grade parents that think because of the changes, that their grade has been skipped over.
No, we, we even went down to fifth grade when we used to do it. So I mean, anybody that wants to, we've, we've had, we, we actually had to ask, "How young is too young?" Because a little guy really wanted to jump in the water and...
Talk about WCAS, school board, jumping into cold, light champagne.
I did it.
You ready?
Please, sir, please, sir.
There's no school board meeting in January, so why not?
There you go, you're all in. I'll let Paul know. Uh, so I will let Paul know to communicate.
You get something out in the Viking as well. I love that this report really captures students and their learning with the photographs. We have sixth-grade scientists who planned and carried out investigations to answer, "How does the reduction of sea ice affect ocean temperatures?" And I worked with one scientist who was just seeing this global, I don't know, classroom.
And Jen or Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, but this was part of Veep as well, right?
Yes, it is.
So if you, if you remember the, the change from Hands-on Nature or Four Winds to Veep, it, it got some, it got some communication, at least at the local level, at the school level. But Veep, I've seen a couple of their lessons, it's pretty amazing. They bring people in, they, they help design and...
Seven-Eight has done some.
I remember now, I remember now.
Fourth grade has done green energy for the last few years, solar, wind, power. Kids learn to create and collect their energies. Veep is a really nice resource.
So it's Vermont Environmental Education for grades?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Seventh and eighth graders walked to town hall for their mock polling station. Heading into our UAs, Chris Shattuck is our number one, or the list of one hundred educators to follow on Twitter. How did he do that?
He does.
Are you following him?
He's following me.
He's not following me.
He's pretty amazing.
He is.
From some of the students, you may have seen some of their Mexican tradition projects from the Day of the Dead. It's definitely a hit around the building. On the backside, there's some new seventh and eighth grade art hanging in the front of the building. If you haven't gone by, absolutely. I mean, we're very fortunate to have our art program. Extracurriculars, the Imagine After-School Imagineers will be singing and performing at the Pillsbury Manor in South Burlington on November twenty-first. Our eighth-grade Glow students attended the Outreach, Outright Vermont Youth Conference in Burlington. Are you familiar with our Glow program? Just involvement of students, great support network. See, CYLEed, it's a little bit different. See, CYLEED, it's a little bit different, it has been something else through CSSU in the past, but they sponsored the Red Ribbon Week and they're now promoting the Great American Smokeout Thursday, November 17th. From our last board meeting, we knew that UA Curriculum Night and the Harvest Dinner was coming and it was a huge success. Great turnout, really happy feedback from the people who were involved. And then finally tomorrow night, set your clocks for 6:30, we'll have a PI, uh, Positive School Climate PBIS informational meeting. And anything you want to say about our student enrollment? I think we grew one student.
Yeah, so.
We're still growing.
We were joking about this before we got here.
Was it eighth grader or was it a third or eighth, was it a two grade should go one?
I, I forgot to put it on, so then we used our memory of the last 30 days and how many students we've grown. So we're pretty sure it's really accurate.
It was too late to call.
We started thinking about the new students I placed and so I can remember.
As long as it's not 10, we're good.
Well, wait, you've got your fingers.
Five twenty-nine.
That is our report.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. You good? All right, 5.2 CSD debrief. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped 5.1.1, Budget Process Update. Do you wanna talk about that a little bit?
Yeah.
Understanding that we are no longer doing the budget, but the CVSD board is.
I told Susan that we wouldn't have to worry about making it a discussion item because you're really good about that. So thank you for modeling that. So I, I think the update, uh, what would be helpful for you is the slides that you've seen in years past, uh, when we've actually had it become a discussion and then, uh, part of the budget process is where we are currently with the HCS K8 enrollment, uh, up three and a half percent from last year. The K8 enrollment, uh, and, uh, for class size. So you see the proposed 17, 18. And to make sense of all those numbers, we have a sixth grade group this year, uh, 22, uh, I'm sorry, 65 kids, 22 in each grade. In the decision packets, you're gonna see an additional classroom teacher as that, as that bump goes up to the middle school. Yeah. Yeah, so you're gonna. No, uh, well, you're gonna be seeing on the back because that's part of the update. Yeah. No, but I'm giving you an update of, I'm, I'm drawing a point of reference, that's the reason why. And as I mentioned before, to go back to look at that number, the, the second grade, uh, the proposed for 17, 18 is at 63, uh, for three teachers and I don't feel much, I don't feel comfortable going much above 22 in a class in second grade. The ed quality standards would say that we should be below 20. At that age level.
21 doesn't do it.
Well, 21 is what we're currently at.
I'm just saying it's 60, I'm just being silly.
Oh, okay.
So this proposal, uh, this proposal is an additional, um, 1F, 1.0 FTE teacher?
Yes.
Is that correct?
And, um, I see where you're putting it on your notes and I appreciate that and I, on the back on the decision packets, I, I labeled it, you know, like seventh grade classroom teacher, but then I, we, we're not sure where, you know, based on configurations and things of that nature.
And this is just.
Yeah.
Me, but I've, um, it would be helpful to know a change from what to what. So for example, the PBL coach, you know, it's a change from .5 to 1.0 or it's a change of zero to .5 or from what to what and the, you know, the teachers, there's a change from, I don't know, with the number, how many we have, something to something else.
Yeah, I, I think with Bob's guidance, uh, he just kind of lists.
I know, I know.
And then at the.
But for communications.
CBS.
It's out of context.
So for CVSD, I think when this becomes part of the budget process, that, uh, the dollar figures will be in there. This is just changes that I'm thinking about. Does that make sense?
Right, and I guess my request would be the same too. Cause you know, people will probably, when it comes to Heinsberg, people will probably still come to these board members and ask questions of these board members and it's just helpful to know change from what to what.
Okay. So enrollment projections, uh, these come from Nezdek. Skeptical, I guess is the best word I would use. And, and Bill will share some information on a facilities meeting that we recently had. But, um, these obviously don't take in, into account any of the builds that could potentially happen anytime.
And I think they don't, what those projections can't, I, I think the challenge we've had with those projections oftentimes is what I think about being involved in the real estate business on the periphery is Heinsberg's one of the last places in Chittenden County where a young family can come and buy a house. You know, so it doesn't necessarily be new stuff, you know? So that's the part that you can't, that you.
These tend to be based on births.
Understood.
Well, and, and building permits.
Whether it's, whether it's Nezdek or whoever we used to use, it was based on births and maybe on building permits. It didn't account for that.
What I'm saying, what you can't quantify is, Shaila and Paula could exemplify, have children currently, I don't know if they ever going to, but they were a younger couple who could wanna live in Chittenden County, so they bought a house in town. There's some probably who didn't have children in the school, left.
All I was saying is that it, it just gives us a point of reference.
No, understood.
Yeah, the, the conversation that you and I had with Alex.
Right.
Much more, uh, relevant.
And, and what is that?
I'll get to you later, but I'm agreeing with you that these things have been accurate, I think for a reason, and that's a part you can't quantify.
Yeah, I think, yeah, so, so, uh, that's just, uh, just FYI enrollment. And then, you know, changes for 17, 18, um, additional classroom teacher as we, as I alluded to earlier. Uh, the .5 PBL coach, um, we do have a .5 PBL coach and, and what, what was interesting, uh, last month and, and I knew that this was something we were thinking about, but, um, to talk about all the PD that was happening, I think a question was asked, well, after this year, will you be set? And I hope that the presentation tonight showed the amount of work and effort that is happening behind the scenes in terms of the seven, eight team is kind of on the, the leading edge of, of implementing PBL. And even with the four teachers, there's a wide discrepancy of where they are in the process. So then you take it to a, a more varied group and, uh, so I'm so thankful to have Susan and, uh, our, our .5 PBL coach currently. But it's woefully inadequate for the, the work that needs to be done. So, so having that extra support is gonna be really beneficial to us next year if it, if it goes through.
Well, you're, you're, you're really changing completely the methodology and these, these kind of changes do not happen any year, in two years.
CVSD year five or six.
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, I keep saying, I appreciate the fact that this initiative, you presented it to us, but you're really, really following through on it and it's, it's happening. So at least from what I said, I know that's not gonna be a, a one, a one-year deal, so I guess it's an export to the side, but.
So the next one is, is a paraspecialist, the, um, and, and Bill, this kind of goes to your point uh, around how many groupings are there in math? As we become better at differentiating and meeting the needs of the learners, the, the more, the more neat, I mean, we're identifying needs and it seems like, wow, you should have been doing this forever. But kind of how, how are we bringing the kids up from a two to a three? And, and how are we taking the kids that are at a three and moving them to a four? And how are we taking the kids that are at a four and providing, you know, different areas of, um, you know, different areas of focus? So, um, we have a paraspecialist written down, it's gonna be a conversation around in-class support. And, uh, it's kind of a placeholder of what we know has worked extremely well, uh, for the last three years now. And, uh, and something that, um, we're, we're finding the need to, uh, there, there's one grade level that really needs some extra support. Enrichment funding, uh, this has come from a realization, uh, this past cycle through the PI grant cycle is they had requests in excess of five times the amount that they were able to, to give out. And, and then I thought back to, I've been at Heinsberg seven years, we've been reducing the budget every year in the seven years. And eight years ago, the year before I got there, Heinsberg actually had an enrichment coordinator who was solely responsible for providing opportunities for students. Now our teachers are looking at ways to provide opportunities for students that go kind of above and beyond, really cool, awesome ways. I think about Paul Rocheloe's cranky project that the kids really get into and bringing in outside people. And we don't have any money in the budget, we have zero dollars for those types of experiences. So I would like to start small and, and have that be part of the puzzle. And then capital improvement, uh, as you know, we have a five-year capital improvement plan. For, for this coming year, we'd be $10,000 short with what, um, we needed in order to stay true to our five-year capital improvement. So that's, um, it's, you know, it's, it's interesting, the conversations have changed, uh, at the, at the budget level and, I mean, this just being an update. Elaine has become intricately involved now in the process. And it's, 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 uh, it's just interesting because she's having these conversations with every, every building level and, and who knows how it's gonna flesh out in the end, but I know that, uh, these are the things that, that I'm gonna advocate for, for Heinsberg. And I feel really good about where we are and where we're going, so.
Just to give a little context of how we're handling this, we're really using the approach that we use for, um, special ed, for service planning.
Yeah.
So we, Bob, Cindy, Jeff, Megan and I met with each individual set of administrators for an hour and a half to two hours a few weeks ago, collected a set, um, amount of information from each one of them, class sizes, ratios, uh, other instructional support they have in the classroom, other instructional support they have outside the classroom and any other programs they have that might not be in some of the other schools. And our vision is that we're gonna develop a spreadsheet that's gonna capture the information in a way that you can compare FTEs to classroom material even. So I don't know exactly how we're gonna do that, I'm meeting with somebody tomorrow to talk about, here's my, here's what I'm thinking. Because that's going to help us ensure what we heard around the study committee table, equity. Same resources behind every kid, regardless of what it costs you to run your building, whatever, that doesn't count. That comes out of it, that's gonna be looked at separately. But for the instructional part, equal resources around every kid, I heard that over and over again. But the other thing I heard loud and clear that I also very much support is the notion that we don't want cookie cutter schools. So we need to figure out a way that we at the bottom get to a number and then say, this is how much money you have for all of this. You can choose to have larger class sizes and not have an enrichment program or you can choose to have smaller class, uh, bigger class sizes and, right? Or, so for instance, some, there, we do have a school that does have a formal enrichment program, but they might have bigger class sizes, I don't know, cause I haven't seen what that's all gonna look like. But we're being very systematic and methodical about how we're gathering the information and what we're gonna do with the information so that it will inform us. And we've said to all the principals, just like we've said to the board, we're not planning on changes in, for this year. You know, so we're, we're also saying, there's no guarantee on the, on the decision packets. But what you already have, no matter what that spreadsheet looks like, we're not gonna come back to you and say, oh, you gotta cut three teachers now. That's, that's to your point, Bill, earlier, that's a three-year plan, that's a one, two, three-year plan. We will be very opportunistic if the, uh, you know, uh, opportunity presents itself, definitely we'll go there. But otherwise, we're just saying, this is what it looks like, we wanna make sure that we, uh, show the data in a way that's understandable to everyone, including the principals for them to look at it. So.
And we had our first go of it yesterday.
And the principals right here at CVU yesterday all shared in groups that included people not from their own school. In groups of three, you know, so Jeff with two other principals from other schools to go over all of the decision packets, not just their own. But to ask questions about that and to say, oh, well, we already have that or like, well, we don't have that, that's a good idea, why didn't we think of that? That kind of thing. So we're really working on making sure that we're collaborative and that we've, you know, agreed to some high-level decisions about how we wanna do this, so.
Can I comment around that? It's interesting you said that. I had a, someone stopped me at Lantman's last week and the conversation was about this. This parent has kids in this school and her sister has kids in a different school in the SU. And her comment to me was is, it seems like that school has programs that our school doesn't now have.
Right.
And are we, with this consolidation, am I, are things gonna stay the same? And I'm not, you have to answer this question, I'm just gonna, what her concerns were. She says, well, if I'm in Heinsberg and we're consolidated now, am I gonna be, in her mind, funding those quote, extra programs at that school that we don't have at our school?
That's the equity piece.
Right, that's, so.
So if we can, if we can figure out how to turn numbers that are about dollars and numbers that are about FTEs into a single unit of measurement, then we can say, okay, this is equal.
Understood, and I appreciate, I think what you just said to us is fabulous and I appreciate how hard work you're doing. I'm just saying to you that that's the voice that I heard from the community and I think, you know, this Act 46 is a great thing and the previous meeting we had some discussions about, we gotta really make this thing, now it's done, we gotta step up to the plate and make it happen.
Right.
And if people in this community or, or another town feels a little bit disenfranchised, like, well, wait a minute.
All right, so that's.
Roll this together, but.
That's why we need communication to be really clear.
But it's gonna be also, be communicated well, but also be true.
Well, that's the piece we're working on, to make sure that it's true.
Understood. And I, and I have all the confidence that you will, I'm just, particularly what her concern was.
It's gotta be more than dollars because of.
Of course.
I mean, if you even just look at, um, uh, faculty and where they fall on the salary scale, like you could have.
We're not gonna do, we're gonna, we're gonna call that a different thing.
I'm not saying that we're gonna put that out publicly, but you've, you gotta be careful with that.
No, but we've had this conversation that the methodology won't be to plug in the real teachers that you have. Because that can give you a swing from one year to the next, depending on who retires, how senior the teachers are. So we, this would not be for budgeting purposes, it would be to, to, to understand the equity piece. So a teacher, one FTE would have the same dollar amount regardless of where they are for that purpose. That's how then you can start comparing things and you can see support for kids, not like, how much does it cost? So two parallel things going on, one to ensure equity and the other one to develop a budget.
Which is why Bob has been telling us, we can't just have, uh, two sets of budgets. One compared last year to this year and what's the overlay of what it would be because of that differentiation? Cause that's 70 to 80% of our budget. So I.
I'm excited about this work.
And I was, um, I loved having the conversations with the colleagues yesterday.
Yeah.
Because it's, um, you, you know, it, I think if it wasn't for the, the professionalism of the, the other building level principals is that it could become divisive. And instead it was more collaborative. So, uh, just like Elaine said, it's like, oh, what, you know, we're, how, how do you fund that? And then, you know, learning from each other, oh, instead of, instead of doing this, you know, we, we switched and we've done this. And it just, like, it's building that, that opportunity to, to connect and, and learn from each other. I think that's the whole point of consolidation is that hopefully we can, you know, with it, yeah.
They're all our kids, right? We want the best for all of them.
So I feel pretty good about where Heinsberg is and where we're going. And I, I feel like, uh, the more we can communicate that as well. It's like our kids in Heinsberg are getting a great experience, so.
And we should have a reminder that, um, you know, one of the big concerns was. And we should have a reminder that, you know, one of the big concerns was the parent fundraising groups that happen in the different schools, that there's a pocket of money that's gonna stay local.
And that's a good or a bad thing?
You don't want my opinion. No, cause I mean, if people are looking at opportunities for kids, Williston Fundraising, Local Fundraising sends their kids on a week vacation, not vacation, school. That was really, I didn't mean that. Rewind. But a, a field trip every year, and that's not gonna happen in Heinsberg. So it's not, you know, that pool of money. And they do huge amounts of fundraising for that opportunity, huge. I don't think it's probably something our community wants to take on.
Well, my, my two takes on that are, one, I think that should be thrown into the equity pot. And two, I think this, the administration and/or the school board needs to add that to their message that there might be some disparity, but that's because they raise $300,000 and you raise thirty. If you wanna raise $300,000, then go right ahead.
I, and I do think that that needs to be part of our public communications because that's something that's very visible to a lot of families.
Yep. Yep.
I know it's very productive, it's not. Oops.
You're taking after Bell.
Exactly. Are we ready to move on?
I, I.
Frankly, 5.2 CVSD, frankly, I think we've kinda covered what CVSD's working on with all this budget consideration. 5.3 CSSU and VSBA debrief. Was there anything that we talked about that we should mention here?
Uh, just a reminder of the VSBA conference. Lot of great materials would be available on the VSBA website, particularly related to bias. And also just a reminder that I represented this board, the VHI had a policy change. Two, two points that were up for a vote. One was to change one of the two Vermont NEA positions to one Vermont NEA position on the board and one VSBA position. So now Nicole Mace, the executive director of VSBA will be on the VHI board. It's a small board. That's all.
Okay, great, thank you. 5.4 First Quarter FMR. It's in the packet. What I read is that it's $70,000 of good news. Right?
Yes.
It's early, I understand, but in past years when we've had that to look at and we've had something like this to look at, we've talked about what can you spend this year if there's a surplus. So I would ask you to continue to consider, to consider that as we progress through the year.
I already, I already thinking about it. And I already had conversations with Bob, so hopefully we stay on this trajectory and then provides opportunities in the spring.
Okay.
Usually we, we look at around the March timeframe.
Alright, 5.5 PI Council. It was in the principal's report that Jen read about the Harvest Dinner and UA night, which was fabulous. I can't remember, did I see you there? Well, you girls were singing, so you must have been there. Or Srida was there. Anyway, it was fabulous. And then tomorrow night is the, what's the title? School Climate Conversation.
Jeff is who I was referencing when I said that, you know, when I introduced Val and said, you know, in a conversation, it was the conversation I was having with Jeff and Susan about these meetings that they're having. And I think that really is the kind of community connection we wanna have. Focused around particular topics and an opportunity to educate, but also hear their thinking, so.
Team Val over here, we've all been touched.
It's true.
5.6 Facilities. You guys have alluded to it a couple of times, so let's hear it.
Let me go, yeah, yeah, please. So Jeff and I and Susan and Alex had a meeting and Alex talked to us about possible development, cause I think Jeff was sweating it out with the Green Street development. We got a few kids, how many did we get from Green Street, did you figure?
About ten.
Yeah?
Yeah. And just rumor mill about, now we have water.
No, no, we're, I feel like, I feel like we're in Southern California. It's all about the water, we don't have any.
Yep.
So the only thing on the horizon is at the bottom of Buck Hill, those twenty condos there and Alex thought he'd reach out to the developers and just get a, what's your experience, a number of families and stuff, but, you know, he said he could get a real, but he thought the impact.
For the next twenty, eighteen months would be pretty minimal.
Not grounded in science, I would disagree with that. Given its proximity to school and the fact that the town made the developer put in a sidewalk, that's gonna be a very popular place for young families.
Then he, yeah, that's a whole other story. But, but they've developed, but no, but the developer developed the things across from the, from the school parking lot too. So the similar development is those condos there.
Lyman Meadows.
No, no.
Yeah.
Off Silver Street, across Silver Street.
Oh, 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 oh.
So similar development. So he thought the developer would have a kind of a feeling about, you know, how many families.
I think that's gonna be a very popular place.
But it's projected to December eighteenth.
Right.
That they'll have people in them.
As in a month from now?
December eighteenth.
Oh, December of, of two thousand and eighteen, oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
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 So that's gonna be a little screwy.
Yeah. So the kids might not show up until the next school year.
We can't count them.
I mean, it used to be a ratio.
You have to.
No, no, families might not move until they finish wherever they are. They might not move in until the next spring.
Or they might move in right then.
Oh, Green Street.
Yeah, they could.
Yeah, Green Street. They moved in the second close, so.
Okay.
It's kinda whenever real estate is available around here, so. So it's just something, I mean, again, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna project out what we know.
Yep.
And then if we have to make adjustments mid-year, that'll be an interesting process. You know, it's an uneasy feeling.
But the real take.
Cause it's gonna be a different.
But the real takeaway was is, all the stuff behind Kenny is, he thought, a four to ten-year horizon.
Yeah.
Oh.
They still haven't found water.
And they're doing exploratory wells. And then, oh, the other part of that that we don't know is, even if they find water, they don't have the sewage capacity. So we have to do a Florida bond, expand sewage. So the town have to vote on that and blah, 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 and expand that, so. It's a long way.
We've got time.
Yeah, yeah, we have time. So nothing, nothing huge on the horizon.
And it's prior converted wetland, right?
Uh, yes, the, some of them.
That used to have some. There used to be a number of expected children per household in new development and it used to be, and I don't, I might have this wrong, but I'm seeming to remember, the point four-two.
I was gonna say point three is in my head, but yeah.
Yeah, maybe it's different depending on what kind of housing it is. But is, is, are numbers like that being thrown around?
Not yet. I think when, when all these developments were first proposed, Bob Mason and, and I think Kathy at the time was on the facilities committee, we were like, holy cow, we gotta figure out impact fees. And on the impact fees, that's where the numbers, the point four-two or the point three.
And point four-two may have been like fifteen years ago.
Yeah. And then they, they came back and told us that Heinsberg could hold something like eight hundred kids.
Six hundred and seventy-five was it?
No, it was, it was seven, it was over seven hundred, seven, seven seventy-five, I think. But anyway, so, yeah, that's where we saw the numbers last. We're nowhere not imminent, in the, in the least based on our conversation about.
So the other conversation we had too with Alex and Colleen, we have to leverage your information on this, is first we had a discussion about the ball field at Heinsberg, how it's basically unusable. And do we have to form a little committee on this board to really look at making that good usable space for the kids at Heinsberg? I, I, I mean, I think it's vital we do something, you know, your kids probably come, and your kids talk about it, but that space is basically unusable most of the year. So we gotta figure that out. The other discussion we had was, was about Lyman Fields behind. And Alex was telling us that the agreement that the school board had with the town, he thought was, is that the school would pay for upkeep of the, of the, of the, of Lyman Meadows. Was, what was the other thing that the school and the town had an agreement on too?
Well, I know we asked Tim, Tim was part of the meeting, and we, we care for it in the summer.
Correct.
And they do the other.
No, no, we do a school year, they do the summer. No, but like, if drainage needs to be fixed, that's on the, the school.
Well, if it's gonna be used for, if it needs to be upgraded for sports or something, but if the drainage.
Well, but, right, if it's unusable, because we need that space for the, for the number of kids per school, blah, 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 blah. But Alex had the con- the real thing that made me think was is, that agree, those agreements, there was that and something else we had an agreement with the town on, what was it?
I can't remember.
Oh, 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 the.
You said a nursery school.
No, 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 the, no, the ten, no, no, the tennis court. So he said that agreement was between.
Oh, because the fence was falling apart.
Right, but, 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 those agreements were between the town and H. Heinsberg School District. So what do we do with those agreements when we go to to Champlain, the Champlain Valley just.
Yeah, so all of the.
It goes with the merger.
Yeah, so all of the, i- in each town has some bizarre arrangement or some unusual, I shouldn't say bizarre, some, I'm not using a very good vocabulary tonight.
Yeah, usually we're on top of it.
Unique.
Has unique.
Just, just say the same thing over and over without saying anything, like, believe me, and then just tell us what we're supposed to know.
No, no, we're veering off course here.
Sorry. Sorry, I'm venting the rest.
The best.
Believe me, it's gonna be the best.
So each of the towns has unique agreements with their school districts, their town's school districts. For example, Shelburne has an agreement with the school, sits on a site that was, you know, anyway, someone's gonna go through that.
Regardless.
The attorneys are going through it.
Hi, HCS has an agreement with the town for maintenance of certain things. I have a copy of it somewhere, I know you do, cause you're the one that gave it to me. If someone wants it, let me know, I have it somewhere. Legally, that contract goes with the merger. It becomes an obligation of CVSD to do whatever HCS had to do under the contract.
And they'll all be rewritten this year.
So this has to be communicated to the town at some point.
If you don't have it, I have like a whole PDF that combined them all and give it to you.
But back to the ball field, what do we, something we wanna talk about with the weird conversation?
Yeah, so.
Tell me what, tell me what we agreed to, I forgot. Or we thought we should propose.
Well, you made the point that I, I asked if we just do away with everything, take the backstop, take the gates off, plow it, seed it, have it be a, just a grassy area. And then my, my pipe dream was to build a, a bike trail around the perimeter that kids could just ride. And then two points to that, Bill mentioned that community groups still use the ball field, still use the backstop. So there's nothing that would prevent us from seeding it and keeping the backstop and, and if they wanna use the.
T-ball.
T-ball probably plays up at CVU.
Farm team.
Farm team, okay, yeah.
Yeah. So that's something to consider. And then Tim reminded me that part of the field is a wetland. And that we can't put a bike path in the wetland.
Oh, that's a bummer, I like that.
Yeah, no, but what I, what I said to Tim is I was like, does there anything that'll stop kids if we make a a one-foot path with cones where the kids are required to keep going around and around and then all of a sudden you have a bike path, like, just usage.
We've got maps of the wetlands, so make sure that we look at that.
But to that point, in the pipe dream we talked about, I said, why don't we, can we spend, I don't know what it would cost, probably too much, but bring in soil and raise the field three feet, do this and that. And Tim said, you can't do that, cause it's wetland, you can't touch it.
So, like fifteen years ago, we looked at upgrading that field and at that time, it would have, the dollars attached to upgrading that was like $70,000.
That's, that's the first problem.
There, and there was, there were no restrictions on being able to do it, except for the will of the people to spend that kind of money. And we didn't even bring it to the community.
Tim was pretty sure that with the Army Corps of Engineers in the wetlands, it was gonna be a challenge.
Look it up in the maps and take a look at it.
So if we wanted to pursue the course that you just suggested essentially on eliminating a baseball field and seeding it for a grass field.
We can do that.
What do you need from us to either have further discussion of that or authorize you to go and do it?
So, truth outs, I don't know if we need any sort of committee. You know, bring in the community, any, any, I, I wonder about that. We don't have any money budgeted, so what, what I would be asking for you if, if we weren't consolidated is, let's take a look at it, what is it gonna cost, how are we gonna budget for it? It's not in the decision packets. What, I need some guidance in terms of I can go out and get quotes on certain types of work, but I don't know how we would fund it.
Does anyone have an objection to him doing that?
Absolutely not.
Yeah.
No, we need information.
Waiting to know that, yeah.
Does the board have have a direction they would like me to go? I mean, I, where, where are we?
Well, we need.
Well, well, let's talk about a couple of things here. Let's, Jeff wants to take the metal fences down next to the backstop because the kids hang out and wander x recess all over them. From Riceit, if you wanna do it, do it.
If there's a safety issue.
Do it.
That's.
Yep.
Do it. In terms of grassing over the whole thing, from Riceit, do it. The backstop, I think, we gotta, maybe we should just, taking the whole backstop down. If we wanna do that, I think that would involve some thoughts from people in the community, that's my opinion.
Does the, um, does Ed program use the backstop? I mean, if they play kickball or whatever, they don't care whether it's there?
It seems to me that it might be helpful to have the Heinsberg rec input in some way.
Yeah, we should talk to someone, you wanna talk to Jen McKeon?
But, so can I just clarify though, so right now that field, and my memory is a little foggy here, it, it is basically not usable because it is a mud pit for the vast majority of the year.
Pretty much.
Or rock-hard clay.
Right.
Yeah, with rivers that once run through it, yeah.
Right. So the, so it's not used for any sort of recreation from the school's perspective.
No.
And by taking down the fences and grassing it over, it at least becomes a space where kids can like, go hang out safely.
Right now, we're, we're reprimanding kids for digging in the holes because then kids will run on the field and step in a hole and hurt themselves. So, it's, it's counterproductive in so many ways.
It's sort of, to me, I mean, I, it feels like then the, the object here is like a safe space for the kids to be, I, I mean.
And visually, I mean, and, and this was a Bob Goodrow thing, is that the school should look visually, you know, inviting. And, I mean, that baseball field is, is an eye sore.
So I think you're hearing pretty, pretty clear direction from four of us to pursue eliminating the ball field. Possibly saving the backstop to be revisited. So I think you should explore
Yeah.
bids or whatever work, scope of work you is required to do that.
And come back in February.
And, and we'll have it, you know, if we need to put it on the agenda as a discussion, we will. Otherwise, we'll put it on the agenda as an action item and we'll give you the authority to go ahead and do it. And we can talk about money at that point, or then armed with the board's direction to do it, you can put it in a change in the budget next year or the following year.
Okay.
If you can't afford to do it this year, say hypothetically with some leftover money.
And, and if we don't get the money, we could engage PI to see if we can get a volunteer deal to, to, cause it's not, someone's gonna attract a road tiller, we could road till it up and rake it out and clean ourselves maybe, but let's make that the furthest out plan, but if we had to, we could do that. But let's make that the furthest out plan, but if we had to, we could do that.
And regardless of any of that, the PE teachers and I are talking about buying a fleet of bikes, regardless.
It's a cool idea.
Yep.
And helmets.
Helmets?
Who's gonna fix them?
So, I forgot if it was Earl's or somebody already has a partnership where they, they sell bikes, brand-new bikes for a hundred bucks apiece, and, yeah, so, and quality bikes.
Good.
So, you know, you don't wanna buy cheap bikes that are gonna break all the time. I'd love to support local businesses, so.
Great, great.
Be a great club for a group of kids to like learn how to do bike maintenance and that sort of thing.
Yeah, and early enrichment.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, it's a lifelong skill fixing your bike. It is, when you get a flat, you need to know how to replace it.
I'm a garage man.
No, no, no. I have floor bikes in my garage if you have.
All right, that was a good discussion, thank you. Discussion matters, six point one, Communications Board's Corner. I will tell you that on the way to work one day recently, I did start writing the board's corner in my head. I just haven't gotten it down on paper yet, so.
You were taking progress, serious.
Yeah, exactly. So I will start writing that down on paper, and I, I'm gonna need some input from you guys, 'cause again, the topic is gonna be the success of the professional development time on Tuesdays with the early release.
That's a great topic.
All right. Seven point O, Action Matters, we changed seven point one to appoint an Audit Committee member. The reason for that is because in the past, we've had some audit, we've had some people with special expertise look at the audits and then come to us and say, yeah, everything's good, before we approve it. So on this, that's what we talked about at CSSU, and we did the same thing, so we're proposing to do the same thing here. So in the interim, Bill has texted with Stacy, and Stacy has expressed her willingness to do it again. So I would entertain a motion to appoint Stacy as, to the Audit Committee.
So moved.
Thank you, Bill.
Second.
Thank you, Shayla, all those in favor?
Aye.
It is approved, thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
Consent Agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, thank you, did you get that? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, it is approved as well. Next meeting dates, the next meeting of this board is February twenty-one. That's in the consent.
Oh, sorry.
Feels very far away.
It does seem very far away, which means we have no December or January meeting. For the public, that's because we're not doing a budget this year, but the CVSD board is. The SU board also meets that day. The CVSD board, speaking of them and budgets, they have a regular meeting on December sixth at five-thirty in the Charlotte School Library. They're moving around from school to school within our new district, so they're in Charlotte in December. With that.
And I'd encourage fellow board members to show up at those meetings, and, you know, if you have something to add, please do so.
All right, you know what time it is.
Happy time.
All right, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Shayla, all those in favor?
Aye.
It is approved. Thank you, everybody.